All right, we're gonna go ahead. So much for, can you hear me in the back? Hear me a little bit? Okay, get there. Yes, my name is the executive director of KRT. Third public hearing in relation to our comprehensive operational analysis. The study that we put together to understand really is what we're doing well and what we're not doing well here at KRT as far as our system, the service we offer, our budget, et cetera. I want to start out by going over the agenda for today. We're going to talk a little bit about KRT, who we are, what we do, how do we do that? Also look at the purpose of the study, some recommendations, how has deliberated on the recommendation which we present to you all today? And then go over our new on-demand service and then talk about fare and fare recommendations. Anyone who signed up to speak will get a three-minute window to let us know your feedback. That's what's so important to us and I have plenty of familiar face. I appreciate that you all have been in attendance throughout the three public hearings we've had. Notice the feedback you've given our board. How these recommendations have changed as we've gone along the process. Bear with us, I have to have a meeting in a bus garage on a rainy day, but I appreciate you being here. Okay, who are we at KRT? You are currently in KRT's maintenance facility that operates 365 days a year. We have 34 maintenance facility employees, so we have mechanics, we have bus cleaners. Everything that you can do with a with a bus, we do here. It's very rare that we actually send out a vehicle for maintenance. We've got an extremely skilled team that takes care of the buses when they're up and when they're down. Ninety-two operators, we call those fixed route operators, that's bussies. And we also talk about on-demand or you may know that as CAT, which is our paratransit service. A little bit smaller vehicles over here on the right lined up across railroad tracks. So ninety-two operators, thirty-three members of Adnan for a total of one hundred and fifty-nine individuals. And we are governed by a thirteen-member board. We have representatives from Canawha County, from the city of Charleston, city of Bell, Nitro, South Charleston, Montgomery, Dunbar, and I'm sure I'm leaving somebody out. St. Albans, no one from Clendenham is on our board. No, actually, we don't have members from Clendenham. Mayor Summers is fantastic and attends most of our meetings. You would think she's on the board, but she's actually not. All right, so what do we do? We're a bus company, right? So we move buses. People get on the bus, they go around town. We travel 2.3 million miles in a year, calendar year. We move up a little bit over a million people. Secondly, and extremely important is our paratransit service. That's where individuals who call can be picked up by a KRT vehicle taking them to the door from their home to a medical appointment, to a grocery store, et cetera, and back. We're really proud of that service and that's what has been branded as CAT. It's now what we're talking about with KRT Plus behind me and again on the wall back there. A third thing we do that we don't talk about very often, we manage the county's fuel program. If you were in the facility, you would see fuel bays and pumping stations. We actually have over a hundred county and city agencies that fuel at KRT's headquarters here. And what we're able to do is we're able to help the counties and the cities by bidding out a lower price for fuel, which in many instances, especially during COVID, we save millions of dollars for the county and for those county agencies by providing that service. Now, what that means for us is that, again, 365 days a year, we have KRT employees here securing the facility and making sure that any individuals who fill up can do that safely. For foreign emergency evacs, we hope it doesn't come up, but when there are situations in Canawha County where a lot of people need to be moved very quickly, KRT steps up. So we step up by moving people when there are floods, fires, anything you can think of. There was a softball soccer team that their bus broke down interstate. KRT showed up and moved them. So we solve problems in real time and we do that with the evac team that we're extremely proud of. And lastly, public service charters. This is when you look at the regatta, when you look at the Torte Cole, events all over Canawha County. When there's a public event that needs transportation, KRT loves to step up and fulfill that role. That's because we are funded, our primary funding stream is the Canawha County Safety Levy. We want to make sure we give back to all the locations across Canawha County with these public service charters. So it's a lot of things of who we are, what we do, what is the cost? Well, we see here labor is the number one cost. We have a CBA, we have a union, ATU is represented here at KRT. We're really proud of that relationship. We have the best operators and maintenance employees we think in the state and we compensate them. And this is the labor that you see here that makes up the largest chunk of our expenses and fringe benefits. So we fall under PEIA, which read the newspaper, PEIA every single year continues to skyrocket. That's a cost that we have to take on. Services, materials and supplies, every single thing costs more today than it costs yesterday and it will cost more tomorrow. It's a reality we all experience, whether it's at home, at work, or here at KRT. So what we look at is this past fiscal year, we passed a budget of seventeen million dollars. How do we do it? What is our revenue? How do we pay for that seventeen million dollar expense? The largest portion right here, eight point seven million dollars is that Canawha County Safety Levy. The safety levy that's split between the ambulance authority, ART, and then it goes to the remaining percentage goes to the county commission, which they disperse accordingly historically to a bunch of VFD firefighters and ambulance situations across the county. Extremely important to us, our lifeblood, fifty-five percent of our budget. Federally, we receive three point five million dollars from FTA. This is a calculated grant based off of our ridership and our population. So as more people ride the bus, we receive more funding. As fewer people ride the bus, we also, the same issue arises. And when our population declined, which it has been, that also can negatively impact us. One point one million dollars is our passenger fares. That's the ticketing for the passengers who ride on KRT. They bring in about seven percent of our fares. I want to make sure I stress that because it's throughout this whole conversation, the question has been, hey, well, can we just pay more for our bus ticket? And that solves the problem. This chart would tell you that that's not where the, you know, what's going to solve the problem now. I don't want to put that, we don't want to put that on passengers to try to make that gap up. State funding, about two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. And then the funding we get from advertising and charters brings us to a total of about fifteen point seven million dollars, which you do the math, your expenses are more than your revenue, that means you're in the red. So one point three million dollars in the red this past fiscal year. So what does that mean for KRT? It really means that we are paying our bills with our savings account, which is a really scary situation for anyone to go through because you can only do that for so long before everything dries up. So that brings us to this situation of the study where our board said, okay, how can we come up with a reliable, consistent, convenient service that also takes into account some of the budget realities that we have, some of the challenges we have? The fact that we know what our revenues are going to be and we know what our expenses are? How can we come to the table and create something that's still passenger and service friendly, but also solves the problems that we're experiencing? Because it's not just these, when we talk about the expenses, yes, it costs all of these seventeen million dollars, but there are other outside things as far as capital expenses. Every time you buy a bus, it's six hundred thousand dollars. This maintenance facility that you're sitting in is about a hundred years old. And we've been quoted as much as sixty million dollars to help replace it in order to have a maintenance facility that will embrace alternative fuels, electric technology, et cetera. The future that we have to maintain in order to keep these buses running. Because we could have an amazing schedule for the passengers, hey, we could increase service tremendously. But if I don't have buses to run those schedules on your trips, they're going to be canceled every single time. So it's a bigger picture than when we originally started down this journey, I think, that we expressed to you all. And I appreciate you being patient as we've had this series of meetings in order to have these conversations. Okay. So we started this journey back in two thousand and twenty-two, actually, where our board started this COA. So I want to make sure I stress that this hasn't been a quick process. We had one public hearing and we said, okay, we've got some great feedback. Then we had a second public hearing and the feedback from that meeting was, hey, is there a way you guys can cut back instead of cutting out? If you recall, the first presentation said, there's eleven routes that don't make sense. They are extremely oversubsidized and inefficient. You should get rid of them in order to fill these budget gaps. And we said, well, the feedback from the public was, we're not comfortable with you just taking those routes away. So we're going to discuss a recommendation today that addresses that. To get into some data, we see here our cost per passenger is about fifteen dollars a person at KRT. An average public transit entity would like to hover around four or five dollars per person. So you see here Tri-State Transit, that's down, that's TTA down in Huntington, they're about eight dollars a person. So this fifteen dollars a passenger means that we are extremely oversubsidized when it comes to our routes as far as the ones that perform well and then the ones that are not performing as well. And you see here on the right in two thousand and twenty-two, that about four of our routes make up about eighty-six percent of our passengers, which means those routes do extremely well. But then you see in between these routes and many of those are the ones that we discussed these changes to that are not performing nearly as well. This chart here is kind of hard to read on a on a wall, but what this is, we have the technology on each of our vehicles to, it calculates when an individual gets on the bus and when they get off the bus. It tells us the time, it tells us the location. What we're able to do is essentially create a heat map that shows, okay, people get on the Clendenham bus and then there's not as many riders in between. And it's hard to see on here, but like what we see for instance is number five, people go to DHHR. And then all the way up Big Tyler Road, there's hardly anyone that actually rides the bus, is what the data tells us. We used that as part of our reasoning for how we calculated what routes made sense to modify, et cetera. Okay, some route summaries. We looked at these routes that are in the red, the last public hearing, you looked at them and it said proposed replaced routes. You'll see that that language has changed to proposed route frequency reduction. Those are the same exact routes with the same ridership numbers. We've seen that from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, the ridership has declined on all of those routes. And you'll see certain routes stick out. The South Hills Bus, thirty-three dollars per passenger that gets on that bus. When we said the goal we're looking for is about four to five dollars. That screams out to us that there's a problem with that route as far as how many people ride it versus how much it costs to operate it. And there are other opportunities up here that look just the same, twenty dollars, thirty-two dollars, twenty-four dollars. On the next page, these are the remaining routes that we're talking about here. And on that one, Fort Hills stands out with thirty-three dollars. Okay, so here's what we're getting to right now. What is the recommendation from KRT's board? KRT's board met and they said, hey, let's create a committee to dig a little bit deeper. Let's talk about more of the specifics because this is such an important decision for our passengers. So our COA committee has met twice and at their last meeting, they made a recommendation that they're going to present tomorrow to our entire board to potentially act upon. That recommendation is to help standardize the hours. One thing we noticed is that the hours of KRT were kind of all over the place as far as one route might start at five in the morning and one would start at seven, et cetera. We want to make sure that's standardized. We want thirty-day weekday frequency on high routes, so one, two, three, and twenty-two. Those are the routes that are working extremely well. We want to improve evening frequency, so sixty-minute frequency after seven PM. And then improve frequency for our coverage routes, so all-day sixty-minute service on seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one. And here's the, here is the recommendation that our COA committee is going to recommend tomorrow to the full board, which is to, instead of eliminating these twelve routes, it is to essentially decrease their frequency in half. So routes five, six, seven, eight, ten, eleven, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty-three, those were the routes that were highlighted in red to be eliminated entirely at the beginning of this process. Those are now highlighted to be halved. And you say, okay, well, how do you do that? What we will do is look at that data of when people ride. And we know just from running a bus company that the majority of that data is going to say that there's an influx in the morning and then at night, right? People go to work, they come home from work. There's not as much during the midday and that's where we'll look at making some of these changes on those routes that are going to be halved. Also, the big item here is eliminating Sunday service. We did some homework and looked at surrounding states and there are about twenty-four out of one hundred and seventy-five public transit properties in our surrounding states that actually have Sunday service. Morgantown is the only other property in West Virginia that has Sunday service and that's to help with the university and their operations. Our data shows there are about three hundred individuals who ride the bus on Sundays. We are cognizant of that. We know this isn't an easy decision, but we are trying to come up with something that helps us maintain that service throughout the week that we know is so very, very much important. And so there is a cost savings up here. We say one point nine million dollars. That number is tough to nail down, but that's based off of the hours of service on Sundays and then these routes being the frequency cut in half. One thing that was important and our board members asked, when we started this process, we put a tool on our website called Remix. It's a really neat online program that allows us to go in and look at specific routes and how will that impact you on a street-by-street level? Where do the routes actually run? And I'm going to go over all of the routes that we're talking about, making some minor modifications to. And if I stumble on them, Jacob Pittman, my operations director, will help me with that. But for the St. Albans Route, one SA, all trips will enter Patrick Street Plaza now. Down here and no longer travel to Route sixty, thirty-five, Ordinance Park in St. Albans. One SC, they will turn around at Thomas Hospital instead of Patrick Street Plaza. We're going to post all these on the website, so don't worry if you don't see it off from the start. Cabin Creek, two CC, will not access the Cabin Creek Turnaround past the Chilium Bridge. This is, this will be serviced by another route we're going to talk about here in just a few moments. Route three I, the Institute Route, will now serve DHHR. We've heard of a constant theme through these public hearings is the importance of getting individuals to DHHR. We recognize that and want to make sure we're able to fulfill that through our fixed route service and eventually with our on-demand service as well. The Charleston Loop, the Trolley, it will now serve Gomart Ballpark. Does not have access, does, no longer accesses Pennsylvania Avenue. Pennsylvania Avenue is still accessible in our service through Route twenty-three, so that's a change. The South Ridge Route, no longer access South Central Regional Jail, Davis Creek, Parkway Road, Crossstairs Boulevard, and no express trips. We also cleaned up some, this looked like spaghetti before where we traveled back and forth. This is Walmart here and this is Target. It's now going to be much more clear for individuals who ride that bus to understand where it's going and how that's going to work. The Montgomery Shuttle, this is a new concept and this came out of feedback from our passengers and we thought it over and thought it was a great idea, actually. This is a hourly Montgomery Cabin Creek Turnaround Quincy Walmart Shuttle during peak periods. So from six to ten AM and three to seven PM, individuals can get on the bus in Montgomery and take it to Quincy without having to go all the way down to Charleston and vice versa. Those individuals in Montgomery desperately wanted to get to the Walmart and this will be a solution for them. So again, the process working, individuals coming to us and saying, hey, here's an idea, can you do it? And us trying to fit that in. Okay. Next topic we want to get into, on-demand transit analysis. What is on-demand transit? You've heard us talk about this, many of you have been in our prior public hearings. On-demand transit is the concept of essentially ridership, a rideshare service. So you think Uber, you think Lyft. What if KRT, a public transit agency, could come pick you up in a vehicle that's much more economical as far as the cost of the vehicle? It's cheaper on fuel, it's easier to get operators because they don't necessarily need a CDL to operate these large buses, et cetera. How can we, would that potentially work here in Canawha County? So what we have is a system we call KRT Plus. And how does it work? KRT Plus works with three different ways, okay? So we will have what we eventually call different zones. You see here up on the right, it's kind of hard to make out on here. But zones that will begin to spread out from West Charleston, East Charleston, and South Hills are our three pilot phase zones. And eventually, as we learn what the feedback is, what the ridership is, what the demand on vehicles and employees looks like, we will then expand outwards to encompass the majority of our actual county and our service area. So how's it work? One, we still want to get individuals to the bus lines. So the same cost that you would traditionally use to get to the bus is what it costs to get picked up, taken to the bus line. Two, same-zone travel. If I'm here at KRT and I want to get to, let's say, the Sergio's Restaurant down, down in Elk City, I can get on my phone, ask for a ride, it's going to tell me, hey, it'll be here in five minutes and it'll come pick me up. A KRT vehicle will take you down there. Or three, and we're really excited about this, this is point-of-interest travel. Right now, our first POI that's going to go online with the pilot program is the airport. So for a fixed cost, we're saying around twelve to fifteen dollars, KRT will come pick you up at your home or locate wherever you are. And that's any zone, any zone that's live at the time, will take you to the airport and vice versa. We think this is a great service for individuals, all individuals in Canawha County pay the safety levy, but we see consistently, you know, if one percent of those residents actually ride the bus. This is a way for us to create new revenue from individuals who aren't traditionally going to use KRT. And also when we come around to that safety levy, it's so important for us, it gives them another reason for, okay, we're not just a bus company. We're the people who get them to the airport. We're the people who get them safely home from a basketball game, a football game, from a restaurant, et cetera. We want to play a bigger role in moving people to and from locations safely. But we want to also recognize that, hey, getting people to the bus route, making, getting people to work on time is our number one priority. And we're going to continue to do that at the same time. So KRT Plus, if you have a smartphone, you can download this today. It actually, it works right now. We're not talking a lot about it because we, the pilot is just beginning. But this is an operational system that if you download this and ask for a ride, it can, it works. And it's going to be very familiar to anyone who's used Uber, Lyft, any program like that. It's very user-friendly and easy to understand. It tells you how many minutes it's going to be until a vehicle shows up. And you experience a ride really the same as what a CAT passenger, a paratransit passenger, has experienced for the past couple of years, which is door-to-door service through KRT. And we're very excited about what this can mean for us down the road. And here are those three zones we talked about for the pilot program. So most of South Hills is covered by this Fort Hill area, West Charleston, East Charleston, downtown area, up to the airport. Those areas are starting in the first phase and again, we will branch out as time goes on. I'm not going to put a definitive calendar on when that's going to happen because we're going to let passengers and the data dictate to us how fast or how slow we go. We're not going to go so fast that you fail. The last thing we want is for someone to ask for a ride and it says, hey, it's going to be an hour before you get picked up. That, that doesn't work. So what we're going to do is go slow and be deliberative about it to make sure that the system actually works. Okay, one of the last things I want to cover is fare recommendations. As part of this program, we looked at the fare, what we charge to ride the bus and should that change? We haven't touched fare here at KRT for fifteen years, at least, I believe. Is that right, Jacob? Fifteen years? Okay, so currently today, it costs a dollar fifty for a single ride. It costs two fifty for a day pass, sixty dollars for a month pass. Our proposal is to change that one-day pass to three fifty, so that's a dollar more. But your monthly thirty-one-day pass goes from sixty dollars down to fifty dollars. Why would we change that? If we're in a world where we're trying, trying to cut costs, why would you change that to fifty dollars? We are cognizant of the fact that that seven percent of our budget that comes from passengers isn't what's going to save this whole scenario we're in. And we're also appreciative of those individuals who do ride the bus. We want to make sure that we can make it as affordable as possible for them. And the really cool thing that we're proud of here on the right, that's why we underlined it, is this fare capping process. Through our mobile platform, fare capping says that if you buy a ticket every single day, so if you buy a two dollar and fifty ticket or in the future a three dollar and fifty ticket, once you hit that fifty-dollar limit for the month, when you go to buy your next ticket, it's going to say that ticket's free. In the past, if you were a person who lived day-to-day, bought your tickets, you could end up paying way more than that fifty dollars. So this is a way of helping our passengers who don't necessarily want to drop the fifty dollars at the beginning of the month to pay for a pass. If they hit that limit during the month, their fare is capped, which is a much more passenger-friendly program and policy. And that will go with our mobile ticketing as we move forward. And we're really proud of how that's rolling out. All right. Travis, I think I, oh. Okay. Some frequently asked questions we've got, a timeframe. Okay, if we talk about having these routes and getting rid of Sunday service, when can this happen? We're not going to do this overnight. Any decision our board makes, we want to make sure that we're confident that we've done a public education campaign to let passengers know, how is your life going to change? How is getting to work? How is getting to school, medical appointments going to change? We're looking at February of two thousand and twenty-five before any of these changes would actually take place. Some individuals have asked, what happens to my CAT or my paratransit service? Nothing changes at all. You're going to ride, you're going to schedule rides exactly the same way. You can schedule rides in that KRT Plus app, whatever's most convenient for you. Individuals have asked, hey, I don't have a smartphone. It's really hard for me. I don't want to, I don't want to have to rely on cell service in order to ask for a ride. You'll also be able to book reservations in advance and you can call in and schedule a ride through our service. You can call in and talk to Matt, Amy, Phil and schedule a ride just like our CAT passengers do today. And you can also book your rides in advance. And that way you can say, hey, for the next five days, I'm going to be picked up at this time and we'll come pick you up on those days. Will it cost more? There was a rumor at the beginning that this was going to cost so much more, it's going to, you know, break the bank. Again, we're sticking to this concept that it's going to cost you the same to get picked up, taken to the bus route as it costs today to ride the bus. And that's important to us to maintain that for our passengers who have been loyal to us through this program. Again, the why now goes back to something has to change now in order, I don't, I don't want us to get three years down the road when we've used up that capital reserve fund. And instead of making changes based off of data or ridership or being able to say, hey, these are the routes that we think we need to modify, we have to just across the board, cut everything. That's what you see across many programs. We're coming today saying, hey, there's a problem. How do we solve it? And it's not fun to solve problems this way, I tell you that. It's this, it hasn't been an enjoyable process, but it's been an informative process. And you all have played a role in that by coming here and letting us know, hey, this is what we can do better. This is what we can change. And we've heard that and this is the culmination of that. So what's next? Again, we started in October of two thousand and twenty-two. This has been a long process. From May to June, we did surveys, we received over four hundred survey responses, which was huge for us. So tomorrow morning, we will have a board meeting where the recommendations that I went over with you this afternoon will be presented to our full board. What they do with that is up to the board. They can, they can accept that recommendation, they can change the recommendation, they can do nothing. That's totally up to my board. What we are doing and the important, the most important part of this process today is what comes up next, which is the public conference. This is a session again, and many of you who have been here in the past know, we're limiting this to three minutes to allow, make sure that everybody can get a chance to speak. Is there anyone on Zoom, Travis?
Yes.
There are some members on Zoom?
Yep.
They can enter their comments into the chat and we will include that in the public record that gets dispersed to our board members. And we will go ahead and get started with that. I think Kelsey handed out, handed out numbers to individuals. Okay, we'll start with number one and we're about three minutes and we'll go from here. Thank you all. Hey, again, thank you all so much for coming. I know it's a lot to get down here and many of you have been to all three of our public hearings and I appreciate that. And again, our board members who are here also appreciate it certainly. Thank you.
Give me just one second, please. Sorry.
I'm speaking for the Camas Creek Route. I want to say to make things better, we need to work together. And it's very important to talk to the drivers and the passengers to see what changes need to be keep and not keep. Please listen to what we are saying, be the drivers and the passengers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, I'll have to angle it.
So do I just begin any time? So do I just start now?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, there's a lot to go over with this that needs to be cleared up. So I'm just going to have to do lightning round. First off, I understand you want to try and implement this vehicle process, but it is too impractical for the area that you're applying it to. Just like in the last meeting, these vehicles are not properly geared for the area you're trying to implement them in. We are far too embedded into the mountains to make this a practical idea. And I believe I was not the only one who had that particular complaint. Second off, the idea of reducing the available number of runs per day of all the bus routes might be the best thing on this proposal that you could possibly implement because everything else, I don't think anybody's going to agree to. Sure, reducing the overall number of runs in the afternoon when people use it the least is fine. That's understandable. is fine, that's understandable, but it also means that people who need to use the bus in crisis situations, like say for those who can't afford an ambulance to go down to a local hospital as an example, will be left high and dry, no differently than any bus that currently runs every two hours. There's also a matter that, well, cutting Sunday service would hurt a lot of people. You have people who work night and weekend shifts like myself doing, I don't know, security work, hospital work. I know people who ride the bus just to get to church. Isolating them from being able to take a bus to and from would hurt them just as much as anybody else. At this point, an increase in rate would probably be the best proposal you could make and I don't think anybody agrees with that either. I understand you guys are trying to make and save money, but none of the proposals here are truly being accepted as good. The fact is, you kind of shortchanged yourself by putting a meeting in place tomorrow to put out an idea that for every step of the way, most people have said no to. And I think you're just going to be caught, sorry, I hear you're just going to be, keep getting stopped along the way with the exact same problems. Nobody likes the idea of using those vehicles. Nobody likes the idea of losing runs and losing Sunday service. And there is one thing you didn't clarify on. You said you were planning on reducing Saturday service as a whole and eliminating Sunday. Are you basically proposing that Saturday service basically mimics the way Sunday service works now and then Sunday service be removed entirely? Because you weren't exactly clear on that. You would need to be a little bit more trans, sorry, transparent on what the changes are before you can really propose them. And you really kind of made it more difficult when you have a meeting tomorrow to propose a business idea that today people are probably going to object to from A to Z. And with that, I'm going to step away, I have a bus to catch.
I'm Betty Revard. This plan is totally wrong. You are saying that if I cannot drive, then I have no right to leave my home on the weekends. You're putting your bus drivers who don't want to work weekends and you're saving toward a new $60 million facility above all of us who depend on your buses. We are the reason that you exist. Six months ago, your website talked about your mission to serve us. This is no longer on your website because you no longer accept this as your mission. Your job is to ask our community for the funding we need to fulfill this mission. You refuse to do that. We need an authority that will go back to this mission and do what it takes to address our community needs. This is an important public service. We are the ones who are still funding what you are doing. You owe it to us to request and make the case for the support to get the job done. This isn't it. I am asking the cities and towns who are represented on the KRT board to embrace our whole county, not just your communities along the Canora River in only uncertain days. Return to the mission to serve us as riders. That's your only reason for being here. Thank you.
It often strikes me that people that, when you come to an issue like this, that you talk about you have to save money here or there or where or what or how, how are you keeping administrative costs downs, down? Is it true that you have hired additional administrative people that are taking out of the operating budget that you could fund these routes with? Is there no way to consolidate these positions? Is there other ways that you could save money? As to the routes, if you cut Sundays, I don't have a job. I can't get there. And I'm not walking corridor G to go to work. That's out. So, and what are your specific proposals on, on timing of each route? As in a schedule, as in you print that you have over in the lobby when you walk in? When will that be available? How, how do you expect us to get behind something when you're so vague and you won't give us details so that we can at least see what you're proposing specifically? You've put out a broad spectrum, but you haven't given us specific details. Also, on your, on your website, it shows the different routes and yet it, it goes through what, what services you offer, but no perspective changes. Why? And the other thing, now I work on the South Ridge Route. And so you're proposing getting rid of Davis Creek. I hardly ever see anybody get on or off on there, no complaints. Are you, are you going to eliminate the loop behind Walmart? So in other words, no service to Home Depot, Cabela's, anywhere back there. So, and how, how is the route going to look? So that's my comments and thank you for your time.
You will not save the money. That's the way I look at it. Of course, there's a lot of people who have priorities. And outfit and pants, I thought of some doctor appointments out there where the mobile home, nursing home is. And that's the only way I had to get to my doctor appointments. And it's the way I look at it, you will not save the money. Thank you.
I have a feeling you know who I am, don't you? Of course. As far as racing the day pass to $3.50, I firmly advise against that. Not a lot of people have that kind of money laying around. If you want to really increase ridership, do this. Keep the day pass at $2.50. I assure you, you'll get more ridership that way than by raising it a dollar more. Trust me. Another thing, some of these route changes, you may not know this, but did you know I've actually walked a majority of these bus routes on foot? They all have one common denominator. They're not only vital, and any changes proposed are going to throw these great citizens into confusion. They're wondering when the next bus will arrive, where they need to go. Which brings you to the Sunday service. To eliminate Sunday service, I don't recommend you do that. Why? Because people depend on whether to go to work, go home for work, go to church, medical appointments, or in recent events, special occasions like car shows or whatnot. People need Sunday service to get to where they need to go. Make sure you keep it intact. No changes required. Why? Because you're talking to someone who's used the bus system for 30 years now as of this month. And as for these routes that are underserved or not utilized, I'd like to help you reach out to those places and get ridership up through a marketing system. And I have the perfect vessel for that, my YouTube channel. Maybe we, I can find some way to implement the KRT website into my webpage and incorporate it onto my, to my race cars and my videos. Yes, I'm a video gamer. Let's work together to make sure the system is perfectly intact. Let's make sure Sunday service stays intact for these great citizens sitting behind me. Why? Because I've walked these routes for well over 30 years and I've used the bus system myself. Let me tell you something, Sean, Jacob, it's effective, it works. Let's make sure people can get to church on Sundays at least, because walking nine miles in the morning is not a good idea. But I will applaud you on one thing, reducing the 31-day pass to $50 is genius. I would love to talk with you and management more about helping improve service for the great citizens in this great county we call Canora. I am Jaguar and I approve this message.
We'll wrap up here. Is there anyone who wanted a chance to speak? Yes, ma'am, come on, come on over. I'm sorry about that. Hey, you're okay.
Okay. Well, I told you once before, this is a great service, but to increase it is unacceptable, we'll say, because I too have been riding this bus system for 30 years. And it is doable for $2.50 a day for me, because I'm on unlimited income. But as far as the routes, I hate that this is just common because I'd like to ask questions and y'all don't seem to have that opportunity, but that's okay. I do have some suggestions. You were, I was talking about the Montgomery Route, how they should take a smaller bus out to Montgomery as opposed to a larger bus. And that would cut costs for the smaller buses to go in the areas where there are less people. And then, y'all kind of put these signs out. I'm telling you, I'll just make these signs up, I mean, and put them where the bus stops are supposed to be, because it's very questionable as to where it's to be. I, there's one particular stop that really, really infuriates me. It is Washington Street and Elizabeth Street. You have to go there. We used to be able to get off in front of Wendy's and go around the front of the building of the Capitol, which was very scenic for the people that I've taken, bringing to my home and show off the town. And now I have to get on the trolley to show it off? No, it's unacceptable. You know, then you're going to raise a dollar more? No, again, unacceptable. But signs, we got to have them, guys, every stop. That way, there's no question as to where. The buggies, I have an issue with the buggies. Somebody tried to put me off with my buggy. Now, mind you, I don't have no transportation. This is my only sole transportation. So, and I'm disabled and I was on a cane. And now from the stop at Elizabeth, now I got to get off all the way to the end of the corner of the Capitol. Where there's a stop, there used to be where, at that little park, used to be a stop there. And there is a stop on the other side, but they won't stop on this side, which totally is infuriating me. Because there used to be a stop and now they don't. They want to take you all the way to the corner. You're also at a four-way stop by you, the Capitol, where there are people coming and going, a lot of people coming and going. So I'm almost done. But, and you got to meet up these buses. These buses are not matching up. A friend of mine comes from Dunbar, he has to wait two hours to get a bus to Canal City on a Sunday. And, and he asked the driver ahead of time to, you know, give a call ahead and hold the bus. They said they would and they didn't. So again, unacceptable, but truly, I wish you wouldn't raise it. Ah, I'm the first one too. Can I get another three? Thanks, guys.
Is there anyone remaining who wishes to speak who didn't get a chance? All right. Again, I want to wrap up here, but we actually are going to stick around until 5:30. The question came up, we asked some questions about routes and the Petra. I want to make sure that Jacob, Rebecca, myself, Anthony, any of our members of our team who can help answer specific questions can do so. That's important to us. We want to make sure that your time here is worth it for you coming out. Yeah, when this is out, just you stand by and you can come ask us questions. Yes, ma'am. We will be here till 5:30. Again, I appreciate you all coming out, letting us know for our board members who are in attendance, this is very important for them as they move forward with making a decision tomorrow potentially. And again, I just appreciate your all's time and your patience as we move through this. This isn't an easy road to take, but you all have been very gracious through it and I appreciate that. And I look forward to speaking to you individually.